Good evening and welcome to the August 3, 2022, Calaveras Council of Government Agenda, regular meeting. At this time, can you please stand for the bunch?
I proudly introduce the flag of the United States of America, and in your republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the unity of us all.
Hi, Holly.
As a reminder tonight, since we do have board members joining in through Zoom, we will be having to do roll call. So Erin, are you, who will help with the roll call?
We'll talk.
Okay, okay. We'll walk through it. But just a reminder, for those of you on Zoom, to make sure to listen in for that. We have five board members today with one online.
Board person one online.
Sorry, yes, one on, yep, yep. Thank you. Okay. With that, we will move on to consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda. Is there any board member that wishes to pull an item off of consent? No? I'm not seeing any in the room. Caroline? No? Okay.
Well, if there's anything about minutes, probably should pull that since I went out at last meeting.
Yeah, well, okay, we'll pull the minute one. So what, I don't like that one. Number two? Yep, okay. Thank you. With that, is there a motion, is there any public comment? Not seeing any in the room, I'm going to defer to Zoom. Are there any Zoom comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda other than item, agenda item two?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, with that, roll call, please.
Amanda Follendorf, your vote.
Aye.
Gary Topinelli?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Tim Unitides?
Aye.
Caroline Schrato?
Aye.
That passes on a 501. Yes, got my count, thank you. Next, we have the meeting minutes. I'd put consent number two, is there a motion to approve consent number two?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
For item two, roll call vote, Amanda Follendorf?
Aye.
Gary Topinelli?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Tim Unitides?
Aye.
Caroline Schrato?
I'm staying.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. We have item 11, which is public comment. Any individual that wishes to have a public comment for any item not on the agenda? I'm not seeing anyone in the room, so I will turn it over to Zoom. Is there any public comment for any item not on the agenda? Seeing none? Perfect. We'll move on to a regular agenda item number 12, which is Caltrans. And tonight, we are very fortunate to have Caltrans here. So thank you Dennis and Marlon for being here tonight.
Welcome, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to members of the board. Happy to be here. Dennis Agar, District 10 Director in Stockton. It's just, it's been a while since I've been up here and to see you all in person. So I did find time in my calendar to make this trip up here. And of course, I had to drag my partner in crime with Marlon. So just to make the trip worth our time, if you don't mind, allow both myself and Marlon to give a quick update of what's happening in Caltrans and in District 10. Especially in your county.
Always happy to hear both you and Marlon.
Thank you. Thank you, and it's good to see you, Executive Director Melissa Ragio.
Thank you, Grace.
You're welcome. Just to start with, and I'm hoping that Melissa had a chance to maybe share the email I sent to all our partners regarding what's happening in District 10 and in Caltrans. But as you all know already, we have a new director that was appointed last month, actually two months ago, in June, Director Tony Tavarez. He has been with Caltrans for over 25 years, and he's led the two largest districts in Caltrans. District 7 was his last assignment in LA County. And one previous to that was District 4, which is the Bay Area, San Francisco area as well. And he brings not just his experience, but also carrying the mission that Caltrans has put together with our previous director, who's now our Secretary of Transportation Agency, Tokso Mshakun. Again, we are focused on people first, organization, and not just the organization, but looking hours to the public. And we want to make sure that we are continuing to put the people in first and the people in California when it comes to our transportation network to keep it safe, reliable, and efficient, not just on our highways, but all modes, all multi-modes of transportation. Along with that, if you've heard our previous director talk about our foundational principles in regards to how we continue to do business, he introduced three. One was safety. Of course, safety with a vision zero goal by 2050, with zero fatalities and zero serious injuries in our transportation system. It's a big goal, but we are determined as a State Department to make that happen. Vision zero, again, it's not just our own employees, but the whole traveling public. By 2050, we're looking and we're integrating the safe system approach. Not sure if you've heard of that approach, is being more proactive rather than reactive and making sure that we look at all facets of safety enhancement, not just our infrastructure, but driver behavior, public education, anything you can think of that we can do proactively. These are the new way of how we're looking at safety improvements across the state. So he's, Tony is, Tavarez, our new director, is carrying those three foundational principles, so safety, equity, climate action. But he also brings a fourth one in. And at the last California Transportation Commission, the CTC, he brought in the fourth foundational principle of economic prosperity. I think that's a very important principle in regards to how we impact the economy of California, right? Being the fifth largest economy in the world, it's important that we continue to push and support the economic prosperity in all communities that we work in. And here in specific in District 10, we're going to continue to keep that in mind as we do our work for the communities we serve. So wanted to share that from our new director and his vision of how we continue to, again, meet the people-first culture in our department. The other thing I want to mention, and hopefully you've had a chance, we did complete our first year in Clean California. And I do want to thank all our partners in District 10, including Calaveras County, in regards to our efforts for litter pickup and for free dump days, adopting our highways, for helping with the litter pickup. And we continue to look for that partnership this, this second year of Clean California. We're also looking forward to getting the two projects, state beautification projects here done in Calaveras and Alpine County. So the contact information, as you may not know already, is Sam Sherman. He is our point person. And again, if you haven't seen the email yet, I'm sure Melissa will send it all to all of you, all the contact persons you need to get more information. So Clean California is, again, we met all our commitments this year, last fiscal year, and we're going to do the same this fiscal year. The other thing I want to mention, and probably said this in previous meetings, Caltrans has really been pushing hard to get our broadband middle mile network out to construction. We've been asked from the California Department of Technology, the government's, Governor's Office, to help deliver 10,000 miles of broadband network across the state. District 10, we have our share. We're looking about 807 miles of the 10,000 miles across the state to deliver as early as this coming December of 2022. Our commitment is to deliver all these projects by December 2024. And that's 10,000 miles, $3.25 billion that we're going to get out to the streets in a very short, short fashion. So again, that's a huge program. It is a commitment that we have as a State Department. And we do have a broadband coordinator in our district. I know that Calaveras County, we do have some miles of broadband network that we're planning to also construct. And if you want more information, we'll make sure that we give you our, our contact person. Okay? So we can make sure we coordinate the right section of miles to provide more broadband network through your communities. The other thing I want to mention is that I, as District 10 Director, started and kicked off the District 10 Ambassador Program. And what that means is to allow and actually provide a point person in my office as a point of contact with any transportation issues you may have with Caltrans. That point person would be that representative for us here in District 10. That is one of my deputies, and you probably know who she is, is Grace McSao. She's been assigned as your ambassador for the county and local communities as well. So hopefully you got my letter and her letter informing you of all that. And it's really the purpose is to enhance our communication, our partnership among ourselves. And another point person that you can reach out to if I'm not available or Marlon's not available, right? So we want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to listen, we're continuing to be good partners, and I want to make sure that this gets off in a good start. So wanted to share that with our ambassador program. And I'm doing that with 29 cities and eight counties that I'm responsible for in District 10. The last thing, we did update our District 10 Contact Us information sheet with lists all our deputies' names, our emails, even some common issues that you may have in the communities, someone you can call to get more information. So again, we really try and to improve our communication to all the communities we serve. And the last thing before I pass it on to Marlon is that I was hoping to get my letter updated to the board because it really talks about not just the highway maintenance projects we're working on, but the capital projects, traffic investigations that we continue to work on and hopefully complete in a timely manner that all of you are interested in. So I'm hoping to get that out later this month. And once I get it out, we'll send it to Melissa for distribution to all of you. And of course, Marlon and I available if you have any questions on any of the information we provide on that letter. So just want to make sure you know that's coming. Apologize, I don't have it here today or previously to send it all to all of you, since some of you may be wondering, hey, what's going on in that project and so forth. Melissa did mention that if I was interested in a tour, I'm always interested in tours, especially in the beautiful Calaveras County, so I look forward to that invite in the near future. If you don't mind, I will ask someone to say a few words too, as far as what's going on and planning.
Thank you, Dennis. And hello, good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Madam Director. I do want to give a couple of planning updates for the Board's consideration today. Lots going on, of course, but I do want to highlight some things on the headquarters side that we are tracking in the districts. Starting with our new Complete Streets Action Plan, this is something that's a major focus for the department as of late. And it really, the action plan identifies specific actions that the department will take to advance Complete Streets, and that's essential to achieving our department goals based on climate, equity, safety, and also safe, reliable transportation for all users and respecting the environment. So this action plan is on our Caltrans website, but I did want to highlight that for the Board. We do have some actions coming out of that on the district side. One of those was to complete our Caltrans Active Transportation Plan, which is now complete and is also on our District 10 website, as well as the formation of our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, which has recently kicked off and held a couple of meetings. And I'm very happy, and I do want to give a shout out to Rob Williams for being our co-chair of the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And if any, anyone of the Board or anyone you know in the county who's interested in participating in the committee, feel free to reach out to myself. You could also reach out to Rob as well, and we'd be happy to have you. There's a lot of good things that we're planning to accomplish with this committee, so I wanted to share that. And there, funding related, there are quite a bit of things on the funding side that I wanted to highlight for the Board as well. Starting with CTC, our California Transportation Commission, recently allocated more than $3 billion to transportation infrastructure and including $1.3 billion from the recent Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act, the federal act. And I'm very happy that 2.5 million of that money has gone to Calaveras County and specifically for the North Fork Calaveras Creek Bridge in San Andreas. So we're super happy about that on the district side, and we look forward to partnering with the county as needed to move that project forward. There are some other funding opportunities that I wanted to share with the Board, and there's so many that I'll just be brief with them. First of all, we have our Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program, which is from USDOT. And this one is another billion-dollar program, which is part of the new federal infrastructure law as well. And that's something that Caltrans is very much focused on, evaluating any opportunities to partner with either the counties, COGS, or other associated governmental entities that are interested. And this, this Reconnecting Communities is based on projects that can remove, retrofit, or mitigate highway impacts that create barriers to community connectivity and really try to improve mobility access and economic development for communities. So saying all that to say, if there's any, if there's any desire from the Board, the County, the COG to partner, we are more than willing at Caltrans to discuss any potential partnerships. So this, this opportunity, I believe, closes on October 13th. Feel free to reach out to myself or Grace if you are interested in partnering. We do also have our Safe Streets and Roads for All Program. That's another federal program that is associated, multi-billion dollar program that also is, it's similar in the sense that it's focused on safety and connectivity for users, multimodal, specifically bicycle pedestrian accessibility. So that's one that we're tracking and that we're very interested in on the Caltrans side. We're also looking for partnership opportunities as well. So if you are interested, please do get in touch with us. We're happy to coordinate. Last one I wanted to mention is the, oh, the Accessibility Program, excuse me, the Accessibility Program, All Stations Accessibility Program. This is actually more for CCTA, but I'm mentioning it anyways. So this program is not a billion-dollar program, but there's $343 million in competitive grant funds for this program. And it's really to support improvements to legacy rail fix highway, public transportation projects, and corresponding legacy stations and facilities for capital or associated improvements. That's something maybe the Board or COG may be interested in, so I wanted to share that, highlight that for the Board. If you guys have any, any thoughts, any questions about any federal funding programs or even state funding programs that you'd like more information on, please do reach out to us. We're happy to talk more about that and see if the county's interested in partnering or even applying directly. With that, I just want to end with some roadway information. We do have some closures coming up in the county that I think the Board should be aware of. They're all on Route 4. We do have a traffic control going on starting tomorrow and on Friday from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This is between Bonanza Mine and Appaloosa Road, and we're doing highway construction there. That's on Route 4. And also, we do have a one-way traffic control between Hunter Reservoir and McKinsey Avenue. That is starting tomorrow as well, from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so just FYI if you're out and about. And then the last one is also another one-way traffic control between Cedar Lane and Metta View Road and also just east of County Club Drive. And that's the utility work going on, also starting tomorrow and Friday in the daytime between 8:00 and 3:30 PM. We are also tracking, because we know it's monsoon season, and there are closures that are happening north of us on Route 89. We do expect that. We may have some issue on Route 4, so we're keeping track of that. If there's any closures, we'll definitely post that on our website and also on our Caltrans Quick Map app. That concludes my comments today. If there's any questions, thoughts, happy to take them, and thanks for the time.
Are there any, Gary has a question?
Thank you, Marlon. Thank you, Dennis. Two questions. The $1.3 million that was meant for, that you talked about, you said North Fork Bridge?
Yes.
Is that the bridge right outside town in San Andreas we continue to have a problem with?
Yeah.
And I just want to make just, just somewhat a suggestion, safety-wise, is maybe if you're, if you're leaving San Andreas, you're headed towards Valley Springs, right at that bridge there's a turn or kind of, and everybody just hits their brakes to that turn to get to that bridge. If some way, maybe tiny straighten that out somewhat while you're in the process, I mean, 1.3 million is not going to go a whole long ways, but at least it'll address some of the problems we have with that bridge continually, as you guys know, because you work on it annually all the time, trying to correct the problems. But at some time, maybe at a project, a shop project or something, and maybe straighten it out to make it a little bit safer for people traveling between San Andreas and Valley Springs. And when you go home, you probably go home that way, you'll notice that turn right there, leaving here or going into Valley Springs. I'm glad to hear that there's money that we can get that bridge finally straightened out. The other thing is, yes, I'm interested in the federal dollar portion of it. Maybe we can talk about sometime. And if, I'm assuming a lot of that money is earmarked for safety? And we are approaching Phase 2. We have put out an RFP for environmental and encroachment on that, and easements on that portion of it, the Phase 2, the last phase of it. And once we're complete with that, and that's all done, we will have a shovel-ready project, and we'll be looking for funding. And obviously, that's a safety, we're straightening it out for safety. So if there's any federal dollars that we can partner with and look forward to completing that phase of that project, by all means, certainly we'll partner with you, or if you can help us locate or, or secure some of those funds going forward, yes, absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you, Supervisor. We'll make known, work with our project team.
Okay. And then one more thing for Dennis, you mentioned the Clean Highway Projects and Partnership. I've been in contact, and he's been in contact with me, Chief Dickinson with Calco Fire, which is right off 26 in the west end of the county. He, him and I, through my Rotary Club and through our Public Works Director, are trying to put together a program ourselves on cleaning that section of the highway, Highway 12 and Highway 26 through Valley Springs. So if we can partnership in any way with you and, and get on board with the times that you clean up that highway, because I know annually you do at least twice a year, if we can expand that through a partnership, more than willing to work with you on that.
Absolutely. So yeah, very much we'll be more contact with, and I'll have my Clean California Coordinator work through your office and maybe through Melissa, make sure we got the right contact. But yeah, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming tonight, too.
You're welcome.
Are there any other board questions? Caroline? And that's nothing? Okay. I do have a question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for Dennis.
Yes.
For the broadband. So the eight, what was the mileage again? 800?
We have 807.
Seven, okay.
Miles in District 10 among the eight counties. In Calaveras County itself, I don't have the exact numbers, but we can get to that information and, and actually, I think the best thing is to talk to our single focal point, broadband coordinator, who's managing all the projects with our project teams. So if you're interested in that, I'll make sure that whatever information you need for Calaveras County, what routes, Highway 4, 12, 26, they're all included in the list.
We want, I'm asking because we currently have with the regional collaboration, Highway 4, so I want to make sure there's not any overlap and take an opportunity if 12 or 26 and that segment of the county can maybe see where we can partner with the current process that the county's going through with broadband.
No, that's totally understandable. Who do you want us to reach out to to make sure we're contacting the right people?
Okay.
To coordinate?
Yes.
Because I want my broadband person to coordinate all that effort, make sure, like you said, no overlap. We making sure that when we put these middle mile network in place, it's something that our local communities can actually tap into and utilize.
My question was only, it had to do with when you're going to be doing the, the highway down through here in town, in Valley, in San Andreas here, and while that's open, laying broadband down on channel during that time? I don't know if that's part, you didn't mention Highway 49, so I'm not sure if that's possible at this time or not, but maybe something when we get to that point, you can.
I think it's best we start talking now. We've been asked to deliver some of these projects as early as this December. And so if we could coordinate now, I think before we get out there and with a contractor, I don't want to miss that opportunity. So please let me know who to reach out to.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
I'll be the point of contact, and then I'll funnel the information between the two supervisors, and they can make the contact at the county.
And we're reaching out to other facilities too, public utilities too, during that time that you, because you're going to be tearing the whole road out and reconstructing it, that that's the time to do it. You don't want to do it later and, and create a rut in the road, you know, let's get it done now. So if it's possible to do it at that time, let's start talking now about it.
And speaking of that, we are taking advantage of our partnership and working with the county on our existing wagon trail project that's in construction and trying to coordinate that, because we do have a certain number of laymiles that we want to lay down fiber as part of the project. And of course, it'll come through us, the funding, the change order, and we're trying to make that happen as well.
Very good. We'll be in touch. Okay?
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? I do need to ask that. No public comment? Okay, in the, on Zoom, any? Nope? Okay, perfect. Thank you both for being here today.
Much, thank you.
And next, we have regular agenda item number 13, which is the citizen member appointment process. Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff recommends the council here from the citizen member applicant, which is Patricia Beddinger, and she is here in the audience. I further would recommend that the chair invite the applicant to the podium if you would wish to question or have a brief presentation from the applicant. And then the elected officials are the only council members that would nominate second and appoint the new citizen member. And I'd hand it over to the chair now.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions about that process from the board, from the elected board members?
I have questions.
I meant about the process, not that. Okay, you don't have any questions about the process then?
Not about the process, but I have questions for the applicant.
Okay. So with that, Patricia, you are more than welcome to come up, and thank you for being here and putting your name in for that. So I don't know if you want to introduce yourself, talk a little bit about yourself, and then Gary can ask his questions.
Okay, first of all, you don't scare me, Topinelli.
Pat, I've known you for years.
Okay, I was, we called it a public member of the COG some time ago for a couple of years. I believe I have experience that fits the job pretty well, and I put that in my little resume, which I've learned to keep very brief rather than go on and on. I was a telecom engineer. I did both route work and planning work, and I also did financial, later in my career, financial and budget work and managed the North California, one quarter of the state budget, both new construction and maintenance and repair, and which included a rehab component. Both of those budgets ran at that time over $200 million each, lots and lots of projects. Some of them were reroutes of highways that involved working with Caltrans. financial and budget work and managed the North California, one quarter of the state budget, both new construction and maintenance and repair, and which included a rehab component. Both of those budgets ran at that time over two hundred million dollars each, lots and lots of projects. Some of them were reroutes of highways that involved working with Caltrans, among other people. And I found that work very interesting and educational as I was growing up in the business. And then I retired early. And then they brought me back as a contractor, and then they hired me back on, and then I retired early again and moved up to Calaveras County, which I absolutely love. I've been here about sixteen years. And I always felt that if I was able, ever able to really retire, I wanted to be able to give back. So I do some volunteering. I'm involved with one of the county's Rotary Clubs. I'm on the local board of the Valley Springs area, Friends of the Library. I work with one of the food pantries over there. Tomorrow morning, my husband and I will be distributing the USDA commodities. The first twelve years I lived in the county, I worked part-time as an independent notary and loan signing agent, which gave me a wonderful opportunity to drive all over the place and learn the area somewhat. Sometimes I was almost in Nevada, but that was, that was actually kind of fun. Then I let my commission lapse and went to work for the library system. I was the rover. I worked in six of the eight branches at one time or another. And when I stopped doing that because I got tired of all the driving, I stayed home during the pandemic for a couple of years, which was the weirdest experience in my life. I've always been very busy and out and about. And we kind of have that behind us, I think, although, you know, depends on who you listen to and what's going on in your area. But I had some extra bandwidth. Last fall, I took on a part-time job working for the new storage facility out at Toyon. So I, so I do that kind of for fun. And I still have a little bandwidth, so. And I really enjoyed the two years I did this before. It gave me an opportunity to use a lot of that experience and knowledge. So, questions?
Gay? Thank you.
Concerns, complaints?
We use a lot of acronyms here at COG. Can you list them all for us? I don't have any questions for Pat.
Caroline, do you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Isabel, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do want to commend you. I've said this before and I'll say it again. When you're on this side, you realize how limited the number of people are who step up for positions like this, and so I commend you for it and I thank you for it, and I am excited that you will be joining us.
I'm disappointed you don't have more people to interview. So I have a question. When you're interviewing for a job, one question you need to be sure to ask is, when do you plan to make your decision as to who you're going to appoint to a position?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, we have up to a year to decide.
So until almost a position expires.
We won't be making an appointment tonight, hopefully. We have enough elected officials to, to decide. Right now, there's four of us and that's all there is, but we could go two, too. You never know.
I do want to give an opportunity to other citizen members. Are there any questions that you feel that the elected members have not asked that you would like to ask to...
I'm just going to back up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Tim. With that, are there any questions from the elected? If not, then I believe the next step, well, let me back up. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any online. No, there's none in the room. Okay, perfect. Now I can bring it back. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Pat Beddinger to take the position of public, John Gomes' position.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, just second it. Since Caroline is online, can you please do a walk call?
Item thirteen, citizen member appointment, your votes. Amanda Falner?
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Tim Mudders? I'm sorry, not Tim Mudders, I apologize. Caroline, Toronto?
Aye.
With that, it passes. Congratulations. So now that means you can come up to the diocese, right?
Yes.
You can come up and have a seat.
Welcome, Pat. Yes.
We don't have a name pass for her. We'll get one for her.
And I've got a binder and everything for her tonight.
Do we have a binder for her?
Go ahead and look. Right, I don't get his orientation? I'm going to be sending you a letter so you can see it.
I think she's going to the doctor. She's going to go for it.
I don't care. This lady was missing, Karen.
Welcome.
Karen. Karen, please.
She's going to be on the radio. Okay.
So when you want to speak, you have to push this button. Otherwise, she can't hear you back there. Kill me. So you push it hard, the red light will come on like it just... Does she have an agenda? We can get to her. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Are you good? You got the mic?
Everyone good?
You're all good? Okay. You got, okay. So with that, thank you, everyone. Welcome, Patricia. We're going to move on to the next regular agenda, which is item number fourteen, the interregional bike tourism presentation by Rob and Carrie, and I believe Carrie is online. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hi, thank you for being here. Thank you, Rob, for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over to Melissa to give a background before we dive into it.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Staff would like to introduce Rob Williams and Carrie McNichol, who will be doing a presentation on the interregional bike tourism and economic development plan. I just wanted to remind the COG that this plan was funded through a Caltrans Sustainable Communities grant. The COG collaborated with four other counties in the development of this, and I'm really happy to have Rob and Carrie here to give you a presentation. So, Rob, I'll hand it over to you.
Sure, thank you. Carrie, the slide presentation is also on the county. Do you want, are you putting it up or is the county just putting it up?
Right now, it's ours.
It looks, it looks like it's up.
Okay, can you, can you work with the county to go through it? Okay. All right. My name's Rob Williams. I'm from the county. I've been here almost thirty-five years. I live in Valley Springs. I came to Calaveras to be the principal low kill, and I've been riding a bike in the county for about thirty-five years. So I'm here to talk a little bit about economic prosperity through bike riding and specifically tourism, and you can see why this study was so important to me. I was the outreach manager for the project. I worked for Calbike, so the things that you'll see in the report briefly tonight that you've seen, some of you have seen already, it was my job to go out and talk to people and to get feedback from stakeholders, gather information, and this is the report, and we wanted to make sure that Calaveras County sees the report and starts taking some action. So tonight, the board member from Motherlode Bike Coalition, Ben Cook, is going to talk a little bit about riding a bike in Calaveras County as a former high, a Calaveras High School student onto his adulthood. Carrie's going to briefly go through the report, and then I'm going to conclude with some requests to COG to help us move forward. So let me introduce you to Ben Cook. Lives here in Calaveras County.
Hey, hi. I'm Ben. Thanks to the Council of Governments for having us here tonight. Yeah, Rob asked me to talk about what cycling meant to me as a kid who grew up here in Calaveras County. It's hard to, I guess it's hard to overstate the, you know, the impact that cycling made on my life. You know, it was how I socialized, it was how I got from point A to point B. I got myself to school, soccer practice. It's how I got, you know, gained independence from my parents. It's how I got into good trouble and stayed out of bad trouble. And, you know, I think about being a kid today and how much more complex and even scary it is than it was when I was growing up. And it just feels like, you know, kids just need two things, right? They need place to go and something to do. And I think cycling can really offer that for kids today. And it keeps, it keeps you on the, on the positive side of that threshold of, you know, sometimes we, we go, we go to the negative side of things and cycling's a thing that really kept me in a positive space for my, my whole life, you know? So I'll just keep it brief. I think that's enough said, but thanks for having us here.
And Carrie, Carrie McNichol works for Fears and Fears Transportation Solutions, and Carrie was one of the co-authors of the report that you should have, and she worked with Calbike, the California Bike Coalition. And I did want to mention that the Motherlode Bike Coalition is affiliated with the Calbike advocacy group for the state of California. Carrie?
Thank you, Rob. Hopefully, I did this correctly. Let's see. Hey, there we go. Okay, cool. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person with you, but I'm joining from one of the other counties in the five study areas, just kind of stuck in Lodi again tonight. So Melissa gave a great introduction. As she mentioned, this was a five-county study that took place during much of 2020 and 2021, when it became really apparent, I think, to all of us that we were going to need to find new and different ways to start engaging in recreation. And we know that there is a significant amount of money that comes into multiple communities from bicycle tourism, and we thought, well, why not us, too? So the project goals really were to work regionally to identify opportunities for bike tourism as an economic development strategy, but ultimately, while we're bringing more funds into our community, to be able to expand mode choice and transportation access for people who live here, play here, and work here and come to visit here. So some key elements that included an actual assessment of what bike tourism brings to each of these counties today in terms of dollars and cents, some recommendations on best practices and the challenges that we face to expanding this, specific project recommendations for each county, as well as some programmatic and policy recommendations, sort of the load-hanging fruit that we think could help as well, and then a toolkit for organizations and nonprofits, many of whom host bicycle rides within our counties right now, to help that process become easier and a little more transparent to more organizations. So within Calaveras County, the economic analysis and data we collected showed that Calaveras County has the highest number of organized bicycle events and benefits from proximity to Bear Valley. You're already known as a, as a destination, as a place for people to go. And there's a lot of people who ride for leisure, including mountain bikers. So we're not talking just about the Spandex folks, we're talking about, you know, people like me riding for the war at the end, tacos, beers, things of that nature. So within the showcase area that we looked at, which is just one piece of the county, and specifically here, we did the area around Murphy's and Angels Camp, there are about four thousand riders that, that come and trips that are made by bike that lead to about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars annually in rider expenditures, and those are captured locally within those communities. That number ranged across the five counties, all the way up to a couple of million dollars down in San Joaquin County, where they've been able to put some motion behind the, you know, ride your bike between the wineries type of crowd. The other thing that we looked at here was the economic benefit of health savings. So while bicycle tourists aren't necessarily creating this, health savings are another indication of equity and access among our residents that can benefit from additional exercising, bicycling, healthy living, things like that. The health savings right now within the area, based solely on people who commute by bike, is about a hundred and ten thousand. That number is a little lower than some of the other communities, largely because commuting by bike just is, is a tall order in many areas of Calaveras County. What that number doesn't capture is the benefit just from additional recreational riding, riding to school, things like that as well, that could be, could benefit. A few of the opportunities that we, we found. New bike infrastructure, specifically to encourage family-friendly riding, exactly like, like the gentleman we're talking about, would help to increase both the amount of commuting and biking by local residents, as well as support additional events within the county. And what you're looking for when we talk about family-friendly cycling is typically what we call low-stress, the types of places that you would feel comfortable riding with an eight-year-old or an eighty-year-old. Wineries, brew pubs, taprooms, all of those great places for a cold or hot beverage that you guys have around the county also offer a great set of potential destinations for bike tourism. And then ultimately, what does the data show? So being able to collect demographic and economic data on our visitors can help track the changes in values and participation over time, so you can start to really see some of the benefits of these infrastructure investments. That's not something that we're always able to look at and track, so this represents kind of a unique opportunity in that front. Some of the project recommendations, and I'll note that since we last came to you over six months ago with this report, and we're happy to be back again, I know projects have gotten underway in Angels Camp, City of Angels, and multiple others throughout the county. Caltrans was talking about all the great things they're doing. So the momentum is there. And really, a lot of the project recommendations that we looked at aren't earth-shattering. They may be big endeavors, but the things that the community has already bought in on, the things that, that ideas and the activities that are already taking place, it's just putting those pieces together. So this map here overlays kind of our roadways with some of the bike shops, the lodging, the attractions. And as I mentioned before, we were really looking at that, that kind of synergy and area between Angels Camp and Murphy's, knowing that each community has something to offer in terms of places for people to stay and eat and those amenities that someone wants when they're traveling, as well as already an existing, a pretty high number of people riding bikes in the area, at least for recreation. So the signature project we recommended was the, the development of the trail along Angels Creek to the reservoir. This is something that has been thought about, has been planned, and just maybe needs a little bit of dusting off and some traction to get it going. But creating that, that connection not only starts to create a real recreational nexus and synergy between the town and the reservoir, but also gives residents new access and ways to get there that don't involve traveling along SR forty-nine. So here's a drawing about what that could look like, especially along the roadway portion. Obviously, off-road, we'd be looking at more of a trail, but really here, we're looking at the creation of a separated space between roadway and the trail. So additional projects that we'd be looking at, some of them are simple repaving elements, Dogtown Road, San Domingo Road, Sheep Ranch Road. These are places where people want to bike already. They're beautiful and scenic and pretty and would benefit simply from just a little bit of spursing up. And these are improvements that are also going to benefit people who are using those roads to reach their cattle, reach their agricultural lands, reach their homes. And so there's, there's a lot of, I think, mutual advantage there to those things. In addition, just looking at ways to put additional bike amenities within the communities. So within town itself, is there a nice place to perk your bike once you get there? Somewhere to get a drink of water? Do you know where you can use the restroom? The places to stop and fill up your tires? So we did recommend kind of the toolbox of things for each of the communities. Some need more than others throughout our five-county area. It's a big diverse area. But again, I mentioned those amenities, things like refinding signage, creating places for people to stop and rest and sit in the shade along the way, fix-it stations, and family-friendly ride opportunities as well. Some of that also looks like programmatic support. One of the, the big things I heard when talking with people in town, especially the cyclists in town and the bike shop, is that when people come to ride, you know, when people come up there, they want to know where to ride. So sometimes it's just making that local knowledge a little bit more public. Here's the routes where people like to ride. Bike Lodi has done that down in San Joaquin County. That's the most requested brochure at the Wine and Tourism Center down in Lodi. This can also look like creating opportunities for schools to use these programs, for locals to maybe start bike, guided bike ride opportunities and bike tours throughout the county. So the sort of... So sometimes it's just making that local knowledge a little bit more public. Here's the routes where people like to ride. Bike Lodi has done that down in San Joaquin County. That's the most requested brochure at the Wine and Tourism Center down in Lodi. This can also look like creating opportunities for schools to use these programs, for locals to maybe start bike guided bike ride opportunities and bike tours throughout the county. So the sort of ripple effect of some of these 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 programs and infrastructure investments that can then lead to more local opportunities for entrepreneurship as well. Some of the program and policy recommendations in the report include some considerations around rumble strips. I mentioned signage. There's also, in addition to wave-finding signage, there's opportunities around our roadway signs too, to help us know where the places are that we should be biking and could be biking. Looking at the promotional projects, such as the Bike Ride Event Toolkit, and helping that get some publicity into the community, those are great opportunities for nonprofits to fundraise, for example. And then maintaining the momentum, BikeValleys2Sierra.com, I would be remiss if I did not mention it, Rob and his team have done a great job keeping that up to date. And then we had to consider the development of our regional ad hoc groups, specifically around bike tourism, something that could involve our our Tourism and Convention Bureau folks, as well as the bicyclists, hoteliers, people that elected officials, hint, hint, people of that nature. And again, as was mentioned earlier, since the completion of this report, we have seen the formation of a District 10 Bike Ped Committee, although that has a little bit of a different focus. That was another great thing that that came about after this project. So with that, I will stop talking and invite Rob, I think, to close it out, and happy to take any questions that you may have.
How much time do we have?
We have 10 more minutes.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, I have a couple of specific requests, and they actually came, were shown here, and then we want to leave time for question and answers. I know you might have some questions about some of this, and I'm here to answer, Ben and our Carrie for question and answers. But my request, I think my number one request is to make sure that the regional plan is part of your active transportation plan. I just didn't, I don't know if that ever occurred, and I think when Marlon was here last time, he mentioned that the COG needs to have a discussion about
Including it.
Including it in your active transportation plan. And I couldn't tell you what happened to the other four counties, but what I really care about is Calaveras County. So that's my number one request, is take a look at that and have a discussion about the plan, and if it fits with the active transportation plan. The next thing I wanted to ask is now that Martin's on the board, and he's been involved with Motherlode Bike Coalition for the last three years, is I think it's time not to say just go Calaveras, I think we need to say bike Calaveras. And I'll give you a visual. When you drive to New Maloney's and you see the big sign that says, Welcome to New Maloney's, and there's a little little icon that says, you can camp here, you can fish here, I want to put bikes on those signs, because people mountain bike at New Maloney's, someday they may bike from Angels Camp along the Angels Creek Trail. So having a little icon that says, we encourage biking in our county. So I really think it's time to have a conversation with Martin and the Tourism Bureau about promoting bike riding. And if you have, if you're not a mountain biker, on July 2nd, Bear Valley opened up, and people are coming to our county, the renting bikes in Avery, Arnold, downtown, and Bear Valley Adventure Company, and at the resort, just to come ride mountain bikes at Bear Valley. So I think it's time to bike Calaveras. The other thing that Carrie brought up is fixed off-town, the fixed Calaveritas. One of my favorite rides is Calaveritas Government Center to San Andreas. It's a wonderful ride. It's quiet, it's, there's very few cars, you just fix the pavement, and it could be a nice emergency exit if the highway got blocked off. But fixing some of these simple roads, and let me tell you about the roads you've fixed. I mean, they're heaven. I rode Tuesday, we started at Haba Road, two guys in their 70s, we ride up to the fire station, we ride out Whiskey Slide, we went to Mountain Ranch, had lunch, we ride back on railroad flat road, back down Jesus Marie. Those roads are heavenly. They they are the most beautiful, pristine, paved roads. I'm not worried about being hit by a car, I'm worried about the dogs, I'm worried about the deer, I'm worried about the locals who will park on the road thinking nobody's on the road, but I I ride as if I'm driving a car. So, and that's why I've never fallen or had an had an accident, thank goodness. And I think that was it. Oh, no, preferred road signs. In Oregon, they've done everything that we're talking about. And one of the things they put up, the county put up, is along Calaveritas Road at the beginning, this is a preferred cycling road, and at the end, at the end, so people know this is one of the most popular places for bike riding. You wouldn't put that sign up from San Andreas on Highway 49 to Angels Camp unless Caltrans did something miraculous between those two routes. But that we could identify, and I could tell you right now, that Calaveritas is a popular road, Murphy's Grave is a popular road, Dorrington Bear Valley is a popular road, everything in Mountain Ranch is now a popular road. And then I'll just conclude with that, my request, by just talking a little bit about bike events. Pre-pandemic, there were 12 bike events in our county, and that doesn't include bike racing, because we have bike racing permits in Copperopolis and Milton. But the Death Ride came up to Ebbets Pass this year, 1,600 cyclists, I was at the the last turnaround. You have Mr. Frog's Ride Back, we had almost 200 people come, ride from Murphy's into Mountain Ranch, and we have my ride, which is supports the Arts Council, ride and walk for art, and we do a ride from Valley Springs to Ione, because in Ione, the Sacramento Bike Club for 40 years is bringing their bicyclists from Ione to Calaveras. So we just, we took their ride and went the opposite direction, supporting local charities. So anyway, that's my, my talk. Got any questions or questions for me, Ben, or Carrie?
Are there any questions by the board? The board, Gay, Gay has a question.
Hi, Rob.
Hi, Gary.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm very pleased to be here. I mean, this this process has been going on for five years.
I haven't seen you for a while, so good to see you.
Thank you.
You need to mention, though, that Bursen Road is a very popular route, too, all the time, and there's also a race that goes through there, a tour that goes through there. So it is also, my question is on this, maybe Carrie can answer. I I noticed it's all up country, but you had mentioned, you know, there's roads like Paloma Road going out that you ride, I know, but it's not in this that that could be maybe somewhat incorporated and maybe you can
I actually have an answer to that.
Okay.
So when Carrie and the group chose Angels Camp and Murphy's as a showcase area, I said, well, wait a minute, there's beautiful roads on my side of the county. So I wrote an article called Showcase Part Two. So you're absolutely right, and now the roads are all paved. So when Party Party comes through, they're going to be blown away that they can go up Hogan Road now with beautiful paved roads. All the roads in Valley Springs are now just, are as good as Mountain Ranch. And cyclists, listen, cyclists, watch, they have computers on their bikes, it's, driving a car's not safe, but a lot of cyclists are, and I'll be out in Bursen tomorrow, we take off at Wallace, and we'll be in Valley Springs tomorrow at Starbucks.
Yeah. I'll just add one one comment on that, which is that that you're right, we unfortunately had five counties to look at and had to kind of try to wrangle that down somehow into a manageable approach. So we picked an area that had kind of some activity going on already, that we thought would be an easy place to start to do more, but all of the types of recommendations that we have in the report are meant to be applicable to all of these other areas county-wide, too. Calaveras County is where I come to play, I know there's beautiful parts, so all around, so it pained me to to narrow it in, but there are lots of, I think, recommendations in there that would be applicable county-wide, too.
You have any more questions? No.
Are there any other board members that have questions? Caroline, I don't see you, so I just want to make sure I don't forget you.
Thank you. No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I have some questions, but I'm going to let Melissa wrap. Do you have anything else you want to add?
Well, I just wanted to thank the project team for doing the presentation on the plan. I think it fit in perfect with this agenda, because at the end of the agenda, we're having a call for projects, and this is a plan that the city and county could also pull projects from. The city is well into their Angels Creek bike and pedestrian plan, and then the county has submitted two ATP grants, so hopefully we'll get one of those grants and participate in that way. But I would really like to thank you, and there are areas like the Active Transportation Plan where we can coordinate, but I would also recommend reaching out to the County Economic Development Director and Destination Angels Camp.
Oh, okay.
I look forward to working together in the future.
You too. Thank you. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you, you know, I was going to do it on my comments at the end of the agenda, but Rob invited me to a meeting, Marlon was on that as well, which was a District 10 Bike meeting, and I attended that, and it was very informative, and to see the collaboration across the district to make this a priority is really, I think, this should be something that we can work together, not only with you here at the COG, but also Caltrans, to merge that all together. So I look forward to where we can go with this. So thank you again for inviting me to that, it was really, it's very informative, and you guys did a good job at Caltrans.
Thanks again.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Carrie, for being here, too. We appreciate it. Okay, with that, I do need to turn over, is there any public comment? I believe I forgot to do that. So is there any other public comment on this presentation? Not seeing any in the room, anything online? No, okay, perfect. We'll move on to item number 15, which is the minute order approving the revised programming for regional service transportation program. I'll turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff is recommending the council approve the revised programming as presented. The city and county both submitted requests to program, for program changes. The technical advisory committee heard these requests and agrees and recommends them to the full council. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions on this? See, none, Caroline, I just want to make sure you don't have any questions? No? Okay. With that, is there any public comment? Not seeing none online, we'll bring it back. If there are no questions by the board or concerns, I am open to either a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, move, is there a second?
I'll second.
Isabelle, second. With the, Caroline being online, can you please do the roll call?
For item 15, roll call vote, Amanda Follendorf.
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli.
Aye.
Isabel Mancata.
Aye.
Tim Muterties.
Aye.
And Caroline Chirato.
Aye.
And then Patricia, don't forget Patricia.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Should I call you Pat or Patricia?
Either one.
Okay. Pat Benjner? Your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was Rebecca Callen, she was thanking us for the item.
Oh, okay. Next, on the agenda is item number 16, which is Resolution FY 23-6, approving the allocation instructions of the Fiscal 2021-22 LTF to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Fund, totaling $18,790. With that, I'll turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, staff brings LTF allocations to the council for approval as a requirement of the Transportation Development Act. This item before you is for fiscal year 2122. Usually, we bring these allocations in September or October, but now we are closing the year. I noticed we hadn't taken our bike and pedestrian, or bike and ped 2%, so I am asking the council to approve this allocation of $18,790. This funding will be held in the Bike Bike and Ped Fund, it's eligible for bike and pedestrian projects. Currently, staff has earmarked this funding for match, possible match funds, we just submitted to ATP grants, so depending on if we get one of those, we can use this for match. I've also included, as an attachment, all the final apportionments that we had for fiscal year 2122. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any board members that have a question? I'm not seeing any, guessing Caroline, I'm not seeing a hand up, so with that, if there are any public comments, there's none in the room, I'm being told none on Zoom, so is there a motion to approve the allocation as proposed in the agenda?
So?
Move by Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Patricia, can you please do roll call?
Roll call vote for item 16, Amanda Follendorf.
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli.
Aye.
Isabel Mancata.
Aye.
Tim Muterties.
Aye.
Caroline Chirato.
Aye.
Pat Benjner.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next, we have agenda item number 17, which is the minute order ratifying the professional service agreement with Fair and Peers for the development of the Truck and Freight Movement Study. I am going to turn it over to Melissa to give some background.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff is requesting the council ratify the award of a professional services contract with Fair and Peers. This is for the development of a Truck and Freight Movement Study. The total contract is $44,730. This has been an item that's been identified in the overall work program and has an approved budget. I reported at the June 1st meeting, we had gone out for requests for proposals, we opened the proposal period starting April 25th, we closed in May 25th. We received no proposals. So like I let the council know in June, we have a very tight schedule to turn around and develop a TSEP application, so I reached out to some consultants to see if they would indeed apply and submit a proposal. We had two proposals. Staff selected Fair and Peers based on their expertise and their background. That contract was awarded in an effort to not slow down the momentum, to submit a TSEP application for our number one priority project, the Wagon Trail Project. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
But Tim has his light on.
Oh, no, I was, I apologize.
Well, and I think Gay is itching to ask some questions, so I'm going to turn it over to Gay.
You are?
I could easily skip, you know I usually do that, so.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Well, I was going to let the board ask any questions, but I can turn it over to public comment.
Is there any public comment?
Okay, is there any public comment on this? I'm not seeing any in the room, is there any online? There's no, so you're good to go.
I will move this item, Madam Chair, because I'm getting the Eli from Aaron.
Are there any, does anyone have any questions? Do you need to give the opportunity to the board? Do you have any questions you want?
We were talking about the Wagon Trail Project when I was on the council before. Are we really going to do it?
It's under construction right now.
I love that.
You should, yeah, Robert, get our Public Works Director, Robert Packenger, and we can give you a tour out there, so you can see exactly what's going on, right in construction part of it.
I'll call him.
Yes, I will get him in touch with you.
Okay, that's right.
Caroline, do you have any questions? Is there a motion and a second?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll turn it over, there's no public, I think, no public comments, so please do roll call.
Item 17, roll call vote, Amanda Follendorf.
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli.
Aye.
Isabel Mancata.
Aye.
Tim Muterties.
Aye.
Caroline Chirato.
Aye.
And Pat Benjner.
You can, I vote aye.
I'd like to thank the council for their support on this item.
Okay, next, we have agenda item number 18, which is the fiscal year 2223, call for project draft guidelines and funding estimates. So again, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa for background.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this is the fiscal year 2223 call for projects. This is really exciting. We're presenting the draft guidelines and funding estimates to the council. Staff is requesting direction to release the call. Staff would like to present these guidelines and funding estimates to the Technical Advisory Committee at our August 17th meeting. Staff will work through the Technical Advisory Committee on the schedule that's outlined in the guidelines, and we will bring recommendations back to the council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The funding totals 2.6 million, this is RSTP and CMAC funding. We also list, like I mentioned earlier, We also list, like I mentioned earlier, all the plans that the local jurisdictions can pull from, so I'm really excited to start this Call for Projects.
Are there any questions on this agenda item? It's been quite a few years since we've done a Call for Project, as it is supposed to happen that way. So if there's any questions, please take the opportunity to ask now if there's not any clarity on how this process works.
City and county staff should be coming to their, their boards and councils with a resolution identifying the projects that they would like direction to submit to the COG. So you should be seeing something in front of the Board of Supervisors and City Council here pretty soon.
I do have one question, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the CMAC, the repayment from the loan that we went to San Joaquin County. And I seen 109 here. Is that taking, I think it was 123 total, the 18 here that's missing or whatever, not even 18, what, 12, 13? Is that for, because the city's project? I mean, we can't re-put this money out for, for projects if that money's coming back and the city's gonna be ready for that loan.
So the, the total loan was 536. 415 was the City of Angels. And then there was, I think it was like 4,900 that was taken off that we had worked with TC TC. But this funding, and this is the year that it will come back, this is the money you're thinking of. It's the 109.
Okay, all right. I just wanna make sure that we, don't you try and use it twice?
No.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions? Anyone? Okay. So we need a motion for this, or?
I just need direction from staff. I wanna release the call, like I mentioned. We are going to discuss the draft guidelines and the funding estimates and the whole process and the application that I included at the Technical Advisory Committee on August 17th. Our on-call consultant, Steve Vandenberg, will be facilitating, so we'll have a good discussion at TAC, and then we'll see what projects they're, they submit.
Okay. So I'm going to take that, since there is no feedback for staff, that everyone is satisfied with the current recommendation that's in the packet. Okay. Caroline, I'm seeing you shake your head. Okay, I see the city shaking their head. Okay, so with that, yes, go with sending it to them. If there's any changes at that level, obviously, we'll come back and we'll be back.
We'll bring it back.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. And, let's see, next, we have Agenda Item 19, which is Council Reports. So I am gonna start to my left with Tim. Do you have any?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Isabel?
I have nothing to report. Welcome, Pat.
Gay?
I don't have anything to report, other than welcome, Pat, and thank you very much. Be happy to work with you in the future.
Pat?
Thank you, everybody. Glad to be here.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Caroline?
I don't have anything to report, just standing in for Alvin this time.
Okay. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. I already, the only thing I was gonna report to the council, which I mentioned in the other item earlier, was that I did participate in the webinar, the meeting. I think it's quarterly? Did that happen quarterly for the district? What is the official name for it?
Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Thank you. And again, it was very insightful. So thanks again to Rob for inviting me and to be a part of that. And with that, I don't have anything else to report. I will move it on to staff. And Erin, you're up.
I have nothing to report. If you have a question, I can try and answer it.
Kelly, this is your first meeting, huh?
My second.
Oh, yeah, second, that's right, sorry. You have anything?
Nope, I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Melissa?
I don't have anything to report. I'd like to welcome Patricia and thank Dennis and Marlin for joining us.
Yes.
I really appreciate it.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn and go into our CTA.
Cindy's here.
Yeah.
Hi, Cindy.
Do you wanna, do you wanna take just a minute?
Yeah, can we take a, let's take a, what?
Five minutes?
Let's do 10 minutes.
Okay.
We'll do a 10-minute break.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Welcome to the CalAire's Transit Agency Meeting for August 3rd. We will be calling the order. We'll bounce right into consent. There was an error on the agenda, so we do not need to do the, the project, we just did that. So I'm gonna go right into consent agenda. So there are multiple consent agenda items on the agenda. Is there any board member that wishes to pull a consent agenda item? Which I think we might need to do the minute. Okay, we'll see two, number two. Okay. So we will pull our agenda item consent number two. Is there any other items that wish to be pulled? I don't see anything from Caroline. There's no one here. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Okay, is there a motion to approve consent agenda without item two? Sorry.
I remove consent agenda items one and three.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
Roll call, please.
Consent agenda polling number two vote, Amanda Follender.
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli.
Aye.
Isabel Mancata.
Aye.
Tim Muterties.
Aye.
Caroline Schirato.
Aye.
Pat Benjor.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have consent agenda item number two. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
There's a second?
Second. Isabel's second.
Okay, Isabel, Tim moved, Isabel's second. Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call vote for item number two, Amanda Follender.
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli.
Aye.
Isabel Mancata.
Aye.
Tim Muterties.
Aye.
Caroline Schirato.
Abstain.
Pat Benjor.
Aye.
Okay. Good. We will move on to the regular agenda. Next is public comment. Is there any public comment on any items not on the agenda? And there's no one in the room. I'm gonna turn it over to Zoom. None on Zoom, okay? We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Status and Update of the Transit CIP Project. Erin?
Me.
See, Kay, she does have something.
I'm preparing.
She does. Let's make note of that, Susan.
At the last board meeting on June 1st, it was requested to do an update for our transit vehicle purchases that we have made and are making. And I've listed them below, but I will go through them shortly with some additional comments. First off, we have the two Ford Global buses that were ordered technically in March of 2021. As everybody is aware, there are significant delays in the manufacturing of automobiles in general, and so we have no current estimated time of delivery on those. Staff does periodically check in with our vendor, A-DC Bus Sales, responsible for this order, and to get updates. And I did my last check-in on 7/29 with him, and there just is no updates. He did specify that this is not singular to us, of course. This is, everybody's experiencing this. And I've also had comments where we should be lucky that it's not canceled yet. So we're kinda just waiting to see if they move through the queue and we can get our chassis and get our buses. Second is the electric vehicle van purchase. I can say that we have received, or LC Top funding is expected in the next couple days or week, maybe. Our age fit voucher was approved, and we did get the insurance payout from van one that was totaled last year, all of which is being held in the capital reserve account. And that, as of today, we have officially ordered this electric van. Clay with A-DC Bus Sales, who we're purchasing it through, estimated that it takes about three months from when we order for it to be delivered. So here he has the chassis sitting there on hold for us, so hopefully, this is a smooth process, and that's the electric van. We'll move on to the 30-foot Class B bus. We got a standard agreement of 5339 funding. It was signed last year in September of '21, and then we are gonna continue to go through the proper procurement process, because we are using federal funding. We are currently, I have spoken with CalAct, who we purchase our vehicles through their co-op agreements, and we have to wait for the Contract 20-01's pricing to be approved before we can actually request quotes, because nobody will quote a price to us until it's done. And so once that is approved, I will go out with the procurement process, requesting quotes from all the approved vendors, and we'll go from there.
Are there any?
If there's any questions.
Are there any questions for Erin? Caroline? No? Okay, Gay, you have a question?
I, I do on the electric van. It's three, three month, once we place the order, it's three-month wait time to get it. And then, once we do get it, we have to equip it with our logo and everything on it, so it's gonna be out of commission even a little bit longer after we receive it.
Yeah, we can coordinate to get the wrapped and kind of schedule ahead of time if we know when the vehicle's coming, if we have that anticipated date. I'm sure we can schedule the wraps, that it's not like weeks or months, of course. It should be fairly quickly.
Okay, 'cause I, I'd really like to get it in service as soon as we can, just so we can check that off to the state that we're moving forward on there. So, yeah. Okay?
Are there any other questions? Melissa and I talked about this earlier. One of the concerns I have with the delay that is going on is possibly bringing back to the board next month to preorder buses now, because if we're waiting this amount of time, we know we're gonna have the funding. Should we go ahead and make that, put that purchase, that order, I shouldn't say purchase, but put that order in now with our, I don't know what you call them, the contractor or consultant? So that way, we're not in this predicament, because I don't think this is gonna change. I think it's gonna get worse. And so I just don't wanna delay us any further with meeting some of these requirements. So I just wanted to see how everybody felt about that, because I do think that that's gonna be something we should give direction on in the near future. Tim?
I think that's prudent. Ebbets Pass ordered a new engine. They just got it. I wanna say it was like 550 days, 600 days before they got it. So.
Okay.
And I think the chip crisis is gonna continue, and the supply issue's gonna continue for a while.
Okay. Any other, okay, Caroline? Not seeing anything. Melissa?
I can have staff bring back some options, see what funding is available, and what we would be using out of our capital reserve. And we can order one more bus, so then that would be four new buses, if we get them, to have something in the queue.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. It's just, I'd rather be proactive than find ourselves just sitting here waiting, and that'll help Erin with her projects. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Any public? Not seeing any, any online? Okay. So do we need to, is this informational?
Yeah, it's just not data.
Okay.
We have Cynthia here.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Yeah, is there any other for Cynthia? Does anyone have any questions? No, right now for this? Okay. Do you have anything to add, Cynthia? I mean, I don't.
Sure.
If you. I know you're next up on the next report on the agenda, but let's go move into it.
Okay. Well, first of all, first off, good evening. Good to be back. And I want to say welcome to Patricia, and congratulations. And of course, I wanna say I'm welcome, congratulations back, you know, kind of thing, to Melissa. We're excited. We got to meet with my boss, Kristy Schiffer, and just go over, you know, her support, our corporate support, and just have that conversation that we're, we're excited to work with Melissa again. And then, as for my report, the only thing I can say to it, I mean, other than, we did have a bit of, we're seeing a rise in ridership, but July came with a holiday and also the electrifier, and that's sort of pushed back some of our numbers. We had to cancel the West Point run. They closed off a route to there, unless we wanted to go the back way, and it's never usually a good option. But other than that, the ridership numbers are, are moving up. It's slow, but they're doing pretty decent, especially this time of year, everyone goes on vacation, tend to really bottom out during this time, so I'm sort of excited about that. We are still working with Melissa and Erin on the bus replacement spreadsheet we have. Most of our fleet is, well, all but about three are aging out, but they're all in fairly good shape. And I think that, you know, just keeping on all of our PMIs and really being proactive, I think that we could stretch it out, but I, I really want those two new buses. So the EV, we're pretty excited. I've talked to everybody at the office, and I said, oh, we got this, we can use it for dial ride. So we're pretty excited about the EV coming soon. So that'll help minimize some of the usage on the van as well. So, but I have really anything else to talk about? That's it? Any questions, or?
You guys have any questions?
No.
No, but I'm glad to see that ridership, even looking from the report from last year to now, has gone up, and even off-school months here, you're looking at July, we still maintain 13, almost 1,400 passengers. So at this time last year, it was like 700.
Yeah.
So we've, things are going up, and we're using it, and even Saturday Hopper, the numbers are going up. So people are utilizing it. I think maybe the gas prices are having a lot to do with it, too, a little bit, so, yeah. But that's good to see, though, yeah.
It is.
Are there any other questions or feedback? Caroline? I just wanna make sure I don't forget. Not seeing anything. I think she's good. I'll take that chance.
And again.
Can we run?
And again, Cynthia, thank you, and it's good to see you. We miss you. Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to staff reports.